Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Any comments? Okay. If there's no comments from the floor, we'll move on to presentation of Johnson Controls about our solar project.
John Samborn is here from Johnson Controls. He presented yesterday to us a little bit. He wants to kind of follow up. He helped us with the EPC project that's currently that we have now for lighting, so. As you're aware, we were able to, Fran kind of put in the application for the solar. We had solar about eight years ago, nine years ago, and kind of got kicked to the curb a little bit and.
A little bit?
And then finally, a couple moved out of the queue. A couple people who were interested in doing the solar had kicked out of the queue a little bit and then people straight up. So Johnson Controls was ready and put together a just plan for us, so go right ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Nick. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm John Samborn from Johnson Controls. And I'd like to go through the project updates that we have for you tonight. Again, as Dr. Nick explained, the district, as I just learned, has been looking at solar for quite some time. And there's a lot of history and Johnson Controls even looked at it with the district back in the Phase One Energy Efficiency Project in 2018. And spend on utility constraints that we face for National Grid. Every time you do a project, you connect it to the electrical grid, you got to get in line with all the other projects out there. And so we waited patiently and this past spring/summer, we thought we saw an open window. We put in an application. It's a lengthy review process, takes 60 business days for National Grid. And we just received positive results from National Grid just before the holiday. Basically a green light to go ahead and connect the system for the school district. So I wanted to share the details with you all and sort of the timeline. So first, the project team, we've worked with your district before on an energy efficiency project. And it's, I'm your account exec, but we have regional management, construction management, energy engineering, and measurement and verification. Will be your team. We're all New York-based. And we also have a dedicated New York SED team in Albany to help you get your project reviewed on time and out of the queue. So we can go ahead and construct it. And so some of the, just some of the project benefits that the district will realize is, is one, 100% of the, there'll be 100% school district ownership of the system. And then what that means is 100% of the energy produced will be credited back to the school district. So this will obviously drastically reduce your total electricity cost. Right now, there are some really great incentives out there, one through NYSERDA and two through the federal government, through the Inflation Reduction Act, and we will help you qualify for these incentives. This project will receive your New York SED building aid reimbursement, similar to how your building aid is reimbursed on your building projects. This project qualifies for that same aid. And so that really helps the economics of this project as it all go through. It will reduce the effect of future utility rate increases. You will start to produce your own power. You'll help protect the environment. And also, this can become a valuable teaching program to instill environmental awareness and responsibility. So just a general, general highlights of the project is we're looking at one measure, the solar PV. We are looking at a couple others to see if we can get done some smaller capital items, just to see if we can make it fit within the constraints of the project. We need to meet a New York State SED payback of 18 years or less. That's state law. So this project will produce over the term, positive cash flow of just over $2 million back to this whole district. The project cost right now, and it's placeholder, we are working to finalize everything. Project cost is just over $3 million. The district annual savings, so this is the electricity savings, are $145,426. And the whole project will be aided a building aid rate of 92.1%. Guaranteed rebates coming back from the federal government are over half a million dollars by using the Inflation Reduction Act. This is your, this is your system. It's a ground mount system that's going to be built on the bus garage property. The total size of this system is 696 kilowatts. There'll be a perimeter fence around the whole thing. There will be a new National Grid utility pole installed with transformer disconnect switch, utility grade meter. So all the power will actually be sent out to the utility grid and credited back on your National Grid bills. The total system will produce 84% savings in terms of the district's annual electric cost. So that's total annual electric cost across all of your buildings. And I talked a little bit about the positive cash flow. So right now, we have a proposed project at a four and a quarter interest rate and your building aid rate of 92.1%. There'll need to be a loan taken out to finance the project. And this is typically done under what's called a tax exempt lease purchase payment. So those payments over 15 years will be 277,000 or 4.1 million over the term of 15 years. And you have your energy savings of 145,000 annually or 3 million over the term. O&amp;M savings, that's a negative. We factor in some maintenance for these systems. And then your New York State aid payment of 191,188, that's in year one, and then 2.8 million over the term. Your guaranteed rebates, again, that's the Inflation Reduction Act monies of just over half a million. And that's, we have that coming in, in year one. And so the net cash flow back to the district in year one is 566,000. And over the total 18-year term is a positive 2.1 million, positive cash flow back to the district. In terms of project timeline, so right now, we're diligently working on preparing a contract for the school district. And we'd like to have this approved on the March board meeting. So we're diligently working to prepare the contract and get it reviewed by your attorney. So that we can bring it back and get it approved on March board meeting. And one of the big reasons for this is we need to make a down payment to National Grid in April to essentially hold our spot in the line to keep progressing. After that is completed, we will work to submit the project to SED for review and ultimately obtain their approval. That will take some time. We have that going into the fall. Once the project is reviewed and comes out of SED, then we'll work with the district to obtain financing. And once financing is in place, we have projected around November of '24, we will begin to mobilize and procure all the major equipment for the project and begin to commence construction through April of '25 and through November of '25, training of school personnel, and then final completion of the project in December of '25. We think this is conservative and we certainly hope that we can build a project because of this, but it's just a reliable schedule at this time. So I have that. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? I have a couple, as usual. What is that? We're also in the process of trying to consider a geothermal project at school. And when you, when you're talking about 87% of our current usage, that's without the geothermal system in place. Is that correct?
That's correct. So geothermal will likely increase your electrical load. Switching from natural gas to heating with geothermal will increase your electrical usage.
And so I guess the question I had is, once that is in the works, assuming that we get that approved and it's going forward, will it be possible then to look into getting an additional solar field put in to supply the electricity that would be needed for the geothermal? Because this is a significant user of electricity, as you know.
Absolutely. We looked at a handful of locations, I think three locations as part of this initial design. And we're certainly happy to come back after the, your electrical load increases. We're seeing a lot of district, school districts move to electric buses, and that will also increase your electric load. But SED won't let us build a project until you have that usage on your bills. It's that 12 months of that actual usage and cost until we can then go back and offset. So when the time is right, we're happy to continue working with you and to build our own solution. We looked at a corner lot up here as well. There's some property up there, and I think Fran had some ideas as well for potential future projects.
The hill behind soccer on the high school.
Yeah, that hill up there.
Or possibly on top of the geothermal wells at East Hill behind the Nellis, where the field is going. Put it on top of that after the fact.
Any other questions?
I have one of those everybody's favorite dumb questions, probably. I believe you said that 100% of the solar array's output will be returned to us by National Grid. So I'm just curious, what's in it for National Grid? Why do they support these projects?
It's part of the overall goals of the state. So there's a Public Service Commission of New York State that kind of governs all the utilities. And so as part of the overall goals of New York State, the Climate Act, the utilities really, while maybe challenging for them, they're in the business of delivering power, so it is challenging to them, but they're in it with us. It's part of their responsibility as the state moves forward.
Thank you.
Another question. What kind of warranty is there on the project in terms of, I don't have a guarantee on it.
So the panels themselves have a 25-year warranty. Some of the other components, like the inverters, will be a 10-year warranty. But the panels themselves, 25 standard warranty. So even long after the term of the loan, the system will be producing savings and be warranted for the school district.
In terms of the inverters, is there one central inverter or are there microinverters with each of the panels?
There may be two or three, and they'll all be connected at one central location down here, or over here by the road. So I'd have to get you an exact count of how many inverters there are. But they're typically in the hundreds, 150 KW inverters each. And so there'll be a handful down here at one location.
So I'm just thinking in terms of the shorter warranty on those, the bigger the inverter, the more it would cost if it's problematic. So if there's more, then it would be a cheaper fix at that point.
And that's why we did try to model in cash flow the O&amp;M cost through the terms of, so that the district has an idea of what you can expect. There will need to be a few times a year, or annually, just checked on, have the system checked. And as the inverters do age, that is something that could come up down there. But we have modeled that O&amp;M, negative O&amp;M cost to consider that.
And then really, after 15 years, you're really going to start to see the major influx of savings because the loan will be gone. So it'll be up to us to make sure that we start to put some money costs away as well at the end of that budget for those types of things.
Are there any safety issues with that material, even if they're minor safety issues that we should be aware of?
There will be, so as far as safety from the utility, the utility will install all the required re-closer disconnect protections that they would on any electrical service. And we will have a perimeter fence around the whole entire array. So it won't be accessible otherwise.
There's no volatility to the material itself? I guess that's what I was getting at. Nope?
And to get the extra, to the building aid, we'd have to go up for a vote, correct?
So you don't, for an energy performance contract, since it's self-funded through energy savings, state law, you do not have to go for public vote to get this project approved. If you go to the public and ask for, they can award you 10% additional aid.
Right. And so. So that's that 81% you were talking about to go to 91%, correct?
Correct. And we checked today, again, with SED, and it was, we think it is around 81. So I have it here, 92. In order to get to 92, you have to ask the public to, not to approve the project, to say, hey, this has been approved by National Grid, the district is moving forward with this. Do you award us the additional 10% aid? And we can go for that public vote anytime before we submit to SED. So we do have some time to do that.
Just allow us to get that extra 10%.
And just to remind me, when would that SED sufficient tentatively be going? June of this year?
So we couple. Essentially, as we're moving forward with the project, but we'd like, you know, to support this to get the extra 10%.
Any other questions? On behalf of the board, I want to thank you at Johnson Controls and also you, Fran, for the work that you've done to get this thing going. It's very exciting. And also going to be a big savings, both for our district financially and also for the environment. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move right along to reports. So Robert, what do you want?
So we had our Star Day on the 21st of December, right before our Christmas break. So a survey was conducted after the event day to see how the students thought about it. They said they enjoyed the lip syncing battle, the ending music concert that we held, and the teacher participation that they saw. And then the winter Wonderland workout. So those are all events that they really did enjoy during their little celebration before going on break. Students did feel that the day was a little bit long, a little bit dragging, could have been, you know, a little bit more cut and short, maybe a half day. So they did feel it kind of dragged along toward the end. They also recommended new activities, like a raft battle, flag football, a basketball tournament, and many more new activities that they think would be great to see in the future. They also recommended that next time, we have less time in our star team rooms and also coffee along with healthier breakfast options in the morning. Overall, the event went great and the student and teacher participation was amazing to see. Our tech, we had a tech field trip, so the sophomores went to BOSI's and they looked at their tech programs. There were two different programs that the kids could go and experience.
Excuse me, Robert, do you know what those two programs were by?
Not off the top of my head.
They can go to all of the programs, but they have to choose two to visit that day. So all the programs are open to visit, but they have to choose two.
So they all said, you know, it was great to kind of see and kind of think about going and experiencing that. And attendance was off the charts. Speaking to, you know, the teachers who had went and chaperoned, they said it was great to see all the kids kind of exploring the new opportunities that they could do. And then finally, our French class went on a trip to the Monet immersive experience on the fifth. So this experience is located in Schenectady. It's a 360-degree art experience. It shows the paintings of the French painter in a new, in a new, never-before-seen way. So all the way you look around the walls, it's kind of his paintings in a very different, new, a very, very unique way. So it was around 13 students that went, and they all said they enjoyed it and rated it 10 out of 10. So that's it. Slower month because of a break, but still some important parts.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, thanks very much, Robert. Okay, next we have the superintendent update.
It's set up by, congratulations Jen for securing a $163,000 grant that we just found out today, tonight, actually. That pretty much includes, go ahead.
It'll include the second counselor for the high school for two years. And then stipends to help with our work with the SEL learning standards that are coming out that we have to implement K through 12.
That would allow us with the public grant plus this to secure the counselor for.
Yeah, two more years.
Four to five years. Without going into general form. A lot more waiting to hear the strong connections grant in the next week and a half, which should secure another year on top of that. So great job with that. Piggyback off of all her work, she secured the counselor. She started the East Hill counselor. We lost the counselor to go to the job. We've got new one in starting this week, and the therapist should be over the next week or so coming in as well. So kind of excited about that. Did a great job down in the room, the elementary school, building an office inside of the office. So we're all set, and we should have this person maybe four days a week, possibly five.
They're looking at five now, so that would be upwards of like 35 kids that they're meeting with weekly.
Who's the person, Jen?
It's Amanda Eggleston is who they have tapped from Family Counseling Center already. So yeah, they're already seeing students that are in our district. And when we looked at the number of students just in our district that are being seen, it's about 65 kids, school-aged students that are being seen within this agency. So hopefully, we can pull a lot of these kids during the school day.
And we, we're able to find a therapist?
They have one that would, yes, loves us so much that.
Okay.
And that's through the grant, through the Family Counseling Center as well. We put the concrete in for the freezer. The freezer, before it got really cold, they were able to put that in, so that is all set to go. So when the spring comes, they just have to put the freezer part on the outside, so we're well on our way there. Thanks to Robert, we secured a guest speaker for May 17, Jamar Root. He looked into a couple speakers, reached out to Jamar, set up the initial meetings and everything. Kind of took over from there. We negotiated a price and we're all set for the 17th.
And who's she want to meet?
Go ahead.
Yeah, he talks about kind of finding and pursuing your passions, which is something in my senior class, I think is missing. I think a lot of them don't really have a plan. And that could be for a lot of reasons, maybe COVID, or maybe, you know, the new cellphone kind of changing their minds a little bit. But they don't have a plan for their, you know, future, whether it's college or trade school. They don't know what they want to do. So I think him coming in and talking about how you find your passions and how you pursue them would really help my senior class and kind of their future growing.
I just secured him for May 17.
Okay.
Great, thank you. I reached out to you and let you know about this Mad City money program we're going to do on March 8, which is, should be a great event for our students that kind of do it all around the country. But I just got news today, the Spectra News is going to cover it as well to come up because of the financial literacy piece that it's tying into. So kind of excited to have that. That'll be a half-day for the students, so they'll be able to kind of just participate that all morning. And get an opportunity to go around to 12 different areas and kind of see what the, kind of a life-like world is like for them in terms of job interviews, in terms of, you know, securing funds for a car, for a house, and go through that whole process. So it should be a fun day for.
When you asked about here's the city, I said, I don't know anything about financials.
They'll guide you along the way.
What day of the week is that, Nick? March 8?
It's a Friday.
Yeah. And then let's you know, Christian Burke, one of our wrestlers, is going to go on to the Marines early, graduating early. Is going to be featured on WNYT as the athlete of the week next Tuesday, 5, 6, and 11 o'clock. So congratulations to Christian. He's 16-1 this year, returning sectional champion and somebody who's going off to Marines in March, so.
And that is who?
Christian Burke. And that's going to be televised next Tuesday. So some good stuff, good stuff overall. I'll let yous know, I think we're going to find out in the next couple weeks, we're having an event for the food service. That's a huge event for the state. I think Lori kind of knows a little bit about this. They do it every year. But they think they might be having it here, so the governor will be here with a host of other people from around the state, actually, to showcase our food service programs and what's occurring in the state just for food service in general. And we had panini samples today, too. Checking that next step out, they get that chicken bacon is the favorite.
I wasn't in my eye.
There's my update.
Oh, John, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel, you know. Okay, so we'll move on to, okay, thanks again. I'll move on to the merger study. merger study?
Yeah, if there's anything else you wanted to ask, questions, talk about. Right now, cost is looking anywhere from a few thousand to 12,000, depending on what we get back from the grant that we would put in for. And it all depends on who bids. It's going to be the next thing, too. The highest amount is about 50,000, which would be 25,000 each plus 50% we give for the grant, if not more. So that's where the 12,000 kind of comes in. Don't know what that will end up being. CASD has been as low as 20,000, so we'll have to see what happens when we put a PDF out. So wasn't sure if there's any other questions or anything, then we'll go back to Dave or.
I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
I think I'm putting, you know, getting way ahead of myself, but I am for the merger, you know, I'm all for it. I just had some questions about things like our administration, like how does that all happen? Because I know you can't have everybody from two different schools. So how does that go? Does that go by seniority? Does that go, you know, who first was put in or how do they do that?
I'll find that information out for you.
Okay. Another question I had was kind of about our learning summit, you know, our 2025, like what happens with that? If you're gone, you know, is that gone too?
Right. Well, I mean, we'll check up on that, too. One thing we heard, which was really nice, was our offerings here and how they're excited about our, their kids getting our offerings.
That's what it really sounds like, okay, right, okay.
I think it's something that would be.
So they do know about it and they do know, okay.
Yep. So they're doing some similar stuff, but social-emotional, but not as deep as we are. And we all know this is the thrust of New York State, so I think it's a good time. But I'll, we'll talk about all those things as we get closer, if we move forward with our, with the merger study.
Okay.
Any other?
I just said one thing that, you know, assuming that we approve it and again, we're going to be looking for a consultant to do the merger study. If we do manage to find more than one, I would like to have a report back to the board about the possible candidates that we can. candidates that we can assess them and hopefully participate in making the decision about which consultants CDU's. Cause apparently from what I'm reading, that's a very critical part of the process.
I think there's another part of the process of making sure that we tell them as they go into it, what we're looking for too. So us taking one of the robust reports that they might already have and making sure we go through that and say, make sure we include this, 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 and this as well. So we can kind of be a little bit of the drivers in that.
Okay.
So it'll be interesting to see what we get. There's not a lot out there, but this is a, not necessarily a simple one, but this one is, I think enticing to some groups because first of all, the tax rate isn't, you know, out of whack and.
How much is that about? I mean, like I saw that number, I don't even know if it's a percent. I didn't know if it was like 16, whatever. What was it?
Cents.
Those are cents?
Yes.
Six, 16 cents on a dollar?
1605, 16, was it 1606 and 1615?
Right.
So that was the difference between the two tax rates.
Okay. So can you explain to me what a tax rate is?
Wanna go all in detail on that one?
I had the same question actually, yeah.
Because I know Kansas City's gonna have to go up.
It's over all that. We have eight towns.
It's over all.
So it's the average, however, all the calculations come out. So one town is still, like town of Root might not be 16, it could be higher, it could be lower. Palatine is higher. Palatine is always higher.
Okay.
Cause their equalization rate is not 100%.
Okay, so some people.
So overall, it's 16%, but it, that yours are not 16%, mine are not 16%.
Just was wondering what that difference is looking like.
So what we would wanna do is, you know, that's why you kind of put that one column to make sure we get everything as close as we can, but also maybe possibly lower some areas.
Right, cause they have, there is, there would be money set aside to equalize if you needed to.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So that comes out of the report as well. I'll break down each jurisdiction and say, this is what we want.
Then you can pinpoint just gonna say yes and say no.
Although what Switzer said is that based on how close we are, it would not be a major tax difference at all. So probably we would not be involved at all in having to reimburse people for any tax.
It's based on your assessment though, right? Because all your towns have different.
We all have different rates.
We all have different rates.
All eight town, all eight.
Yes.
Yeah, but again, on, on average, we make sure the districts were almost identical. So, you know, the, the impact would probably not be significant.
Well, if we have 100% assessment and somebody else said 85% or 80% assessment, it's gonna be a bigger difference.
Get your act together.
We're at 100, right? We're 112 or something like that. Like crazy.
I think that's all the stuff that gets flushed out towards the end. And we decided if we're forward, we wanna.
I mean, you'd have to really know.
Yeah.
Cause then you know how much money you still have left from that column. Okay.
I don't know what Faleen said the number was, but she told me that Dr. Z's number was one year behind for the tax rate. And so there, the two are actually closer together than what his slide indicated.
Good to hear. There's a lot of those unanswered questions that, until we get that report back, we'll kind of dig into where the loopholes are on our side, right? Making sure we're fair enough to report all that out and also try to find a way to do the best for our taxes, you know, hold on. The money is kind of, the, the, the funding is, I don't know, too deep into it, but it's kind of fool's gold a little bit because it goes away. So if you start budgeting for that, and in 12 years, that money goes down to, you know, a million, 500,000, where does that all come from? So it'd be interesting to, to talk to some other districts if we move forward, what, what they did, you know?
I just remember when they built this building, that's what the big conversation was. As soon as that money ran out, then you're gonna have this huge increase, which never, never happened.
Right.
Right?
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see. But a lot of unanswered questions and like you said, I, to myself too, you get ahead before you get there, uh, cause you're always.
I mean, I'm just really happy where we are, you know, like keep things that they are.
I agree.
There's that half of you that says yes? Believe, yes. Cause I, I'm also looking at all the, the work it's gonna take too. Hardship it's gonna take on some people as well. So it's never smooth. So anyway.
And the other thing I think, you know, we were all very pleased is that we didn't know what this meeting would be like. And it's really, you know, wonderful to see that we're all pretty much on the same page, interested in checking it out and pursuing it. And also that's what the benefit is for the students was our top priority.
Right.
And for both districts. So that's a very encouraging, I think. And we'll see. I mean, you know, we're just asking for a study and when we see the study, then we'll assess it and decide where to go from there.
So next month, if you have any other questions, we'll come back again. If there's any other questions, answer them and we can put a vote forward in February. So just gives us more time to just resonate and ask questions and think about some things, right? And I'll get some answers for yous too.
Okay, anything else? All right, moving along then, we have two policies, reticulosis, which is.
Headlights.
Headlights. For us non-medical folks.
Recommendation from CDC and recommendation from the state health department that we alter our policy and our legal team too as well, as the Salento legal team as well, to alter our, our policy with the rest of the school districts in our area as well. I guess we're not following recommendation of the CDC and we're not following recommendation.
Seems crazy though. It doesn't say anything about being better. It just says you're seeking treatment and you're gonna send them right back.
Correct. Because the research is showing that students don't get more students in school.
Okay.
That's the research. So that's what they're making the recommendation for. It's more of kids hanging out at home, playing together, that type of stuff. So that's what they're showing. And in the meantime, kids are missing weeks upon weeks of school because there's nothing they can really do, or trying to. We sent treatments home. We do all of that. We'll continue to do that, but it just doesn't always work out. So this is, like I said, recommendation of CDC, state department of health, and our legal team. The legal team's the one who drew this piece up. So there's two little pieces and we call the rest around the districts in the area and they're all following the same process. So makes sense?
Yep.
In some way.
And this is the first reading, so we'll wrap the vote until next.
Yep, both of these are, yeah.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, then we'll move on to 7515, which is workplace violence prevention.
New York State just came out with this and signed into legislation in January. The governor put forth a, a very straightforward timeline on January 6th, that we have to have a workplace violence policy statement in place by February. Everyone's going to have to do it, so it's not a question of if you want to do it, it's, yeah. So this is the statement straight from our legal team. So.
Any questions? I just have one, the, it doesn't really say in the, in the policy of who the violence is between. Is it just between staff members or is it between staff members and students or parents or, you know, what, who is?
This is more for employees, student, excuse me, faculty, staff.
So this is staff members or?
Yes.
Like I want to come in and beat you up in your office, that's a problem.
I later.
If you want to beat him up.
So right now we're putting together a committee from one person, we need two bargaining units, plus facilities and transportation. This is what they recommended. And then putting together a program, a means of communication in terms of if somebody had to fill out, you know, like a Google form saying there was an incident that occurred and then how that process would take place. So.
Do you know where this is coming from? I mean, have there been a lot of problems with that as far as anyone knows?
This is a, everyone hopes.
I mean, I know there are teachers when I was growing up that I wanted to beat up.
Do we have to conduct a risk assessment?
What's that?
Do we have to conduct a risk assessment? And the committee itself will take care of that?
Yeah. So what they, what we have is a risk assessment forms and myself and Steve will go around to each building. That's where the work kind of from.
Right.
And check things off and then bring that to the committee and say, this is what we, what we saw. So.
Any other questions? Alrighty, so we consider that we'll do second hearing next time and.
Yeah, it's one of these things where we're.
Okay, moving on to consent approvals. I would ask for a motion for consent agenda. Motion for consent agenda.
I'll be second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll start with the minutes from December 14th. Any questions there? Okay, January 3rd. Bills? As usual, I have a few questions there. I know it. 64586, curriculum associate, associates, 11.8 thousand. What is that for?
That's an elementary, do you remember that was for curriculum associates?
Oh, that's for ready, that's for our math workbooks.
For what?
Our math workbooks and our math curriculum.
Okay, thank you. Then we have 64541, start strand, transportation. There's two of them.
That's a student contract.
Transportation contract for special ed kids.
For what?
Special ed.
Special ed.
It's every month.
Okay, thank you. And then, this is not a question about finances, but I saw, I just saw the payment for Humana health insurance. And my concern there, and I'm thinking that we should look into it, is that they have recently been going on a program of putting certain health organizations out of their network. So organizations that weren't part of their in-network providers are now being told they are no longer going to be part of the.
Every insurance company's gone through that. Every insurance company.
Well, the thing that I would just suggest is that we look into that, because there's still the opportunity at this point, you know, to, it's still the open enrollment period.
Did this just start for this year?
I got a couple of calls from a couple of.
Okay, I hadn't heard of it.
And I called, I reached out and they said that they could still go to these places, these facilities, and that they shouldn't have to pay. Still, even though they got the letters and it says that Humana's not part of their in-network, it doesn't matter for our Humana plan?
No, because our Humana plan is, as long as you take Medicare, it's covered at the Medicare cost. So as long as they take Medicare, it doesn't matter because they're gonna pay that amount.
And I think that if you buy, if they don't go, even if it wasn't like in-network.
I know in Texas they have a little form that they fill out. So I would just get that right off the internet, fill it right out and hand it to somebody.
Well, again, I, I, it may not affect our retirees, but I think it's something that we should just double check to be sure that there's not gonna be any, any significant impact.
Cause we went around and around with that because it's supposedly Basset didn't take it. And they said, well, as long as you pay, you're gonna pay what Medicare pays, there's not a problem.
Well, again, I just think we should double check. It just, I, I hate to see our retirees get, get a.
Yeah, we're heading that way.
Get a.
Some of their retirees.
Not that I know any retirees.
They also said, Mark, that there's still, they sent all these letters out to everybody that went to these certain facilities, but of course, there's still the negotiations of whatever they do on their end. So whatever the changes might, or might not happen, it's like before March, I think was.
No, it's, the, the date was, that I saw on assignment, one of the places I went to was February 14th.
Okay. So this place that I'm, that I got a call about was March or something.
And it said, you know, at, at least that there's one place that said that they'll, they'll no longer be considered a, you know, in-network provider. And so that usually has significant financial impact. And again, what, I'm hoping what you're saying is, is correct, but I.
We did a lot of research on that, yeah, unless they change something.
Well, that's why I just think it'd be worth double checking to, to be sure that we're not gonna get any surprises about it. So, okay. Anything else on bills? Moving. Right along, we have budget transfers, anything there? No?
No.
Okay, treasurer's report. I didn't even look at this one. So there. Is that okay? Any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay. Home run program? I had, I had a question about that as well, which, you know, I, I read through it and I saw something which I had never, you know, noticed before in looking through it, where it says that it is designed for you, and as well as the, the other program.
Turnabout.
Yeah. That is for youth who are at risk of an out of home placement. And I, I, I thought it was just for students who were struggling.
It is.
Economically and, and in terms of attendance. I didn't realize it was that.
Academically, behaviorally, we look at a, a combination of things that require that the student have additional supports, the family have additional support so that they can just function better at school and in the community. So all of those programs, because their grants are written that way, so any student that we project as having any type of difficulty are able to receive supports through the grant.
But it's not, not necessarily that they're imminently in danger of being out of home.
Not imminent.
That's one of the criteria.
That's one of the criteria.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just never noticed that before. It was kind of a.
Many of the programs that run through Berkshire and DSS will have that.
Okay.
Can't be honest.
Any other questions on the home run program or the turnabout? Oh, okay. We'll move on to surplus. Any questions about those books? Okay. And then we have the merge football team. Any questions there? I have a question. Why isn't St. Johnsville in the?
The R.
Yeah.
It just said Oppenheim and Freida. So it should be, it should be included? They should be included. I, I, I figured it, but I just, I noticed they were not mentioned. Okay, and approved summer sports camp, anything there? Okay, well, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Personnel, again, I would ask for a motion for a consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll start with appointing a nurse. Any questions on that? And then we have a temporary AIS teacher.
Yep. Todd will be officially retiring for the seventh time.
Till the next time.
Till the end.
Till the next time. Laurie, we talked about this earlier in summer. Laurie, we come in for the second half, which again, is great to have a former teacher, especially at the middle school.
And the substitute food service helper?
Yes, keep them coming. Great.
And sub-monitor?
Again, all these are fantastic.
Cleaner?
Yep.
Two cleaners? Fall coaches?
Yes, that's our normal.
I was very pleased to see that we have only a couple of empty spaces, which is very encouraging. And then we have resignation.
Yeah, just advisor from one of the, one of the middle school clubs and there's already some people interested in taking it over.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for appointments.
Motion.
I mean, for personnel, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Own business budget timeline.
Just reminders as we're coming out, it's gonna be February already, budget season. The governor's come out next week with the first aid run, so we'll find out what happens there.
I would just like to suggest that we add on the budget hearing that the, any candidates for the school board can be there to present their, themselves and why they're running and so forth, as we usually do.
Yep.
So that should just be added, I think.
Which, which date? The May 9th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I think it's good if anybody's interested to hear, hear them and what they have to say or, you know, it's an opportunity. Because I think it's good if anybody's interested to hear, hear them and what they have to say, or, you know, it's an opportunity for people to present themselves. Which seat is up this year?
Some mine.
Yours, because you're the temporary.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions about the budget timeline? And then, also, I'd like to, excuse me, just remind you, in terms of own business, even though it's not on the agenda, about the NISBA, they're gonna have on February second, a virtual thing about the current, the current budget.
I'm already signed up.
And so anybody else that would be interested, I think it's always very informative and gives you a good idea of what we're facing financially in terms of OPO's proposals to the, to the state legislature for the new year, and then on the seventh, they're gonna have an in-person lobbying effort. And you know what, you'll, you'll, you'll learn on the second will help you to be a more effective lobbying person. So, and I'm planning to go on the, on the seventh, if anyone else is interested, please let me know so we can go together. Okay? And moving right along, tuition.
Just a reminder, at the back of the next month, we'll look at our tuition, our out-of-district placement again, we have to do that annually, so just a reminder, we'll talk about it next month. That's about it.
Okay, and then, and you need to go into executive session? Okay, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And good evening, everyone.
Have a nice night.
Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Are we ready to go home?
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, it's like an hour longer than I thought we were.
So we solve all the problems.